So it's five o'clock, so we're gonna get started. Good evening, everyone. Glad to see a lot of you show up. Welcome to the Pencrest School Board Candidate Forum. So first off, we'd like to really thank Principal Erica Howick over there for letting us host this event. It means a lot that we're able to allow candidates to express their views and educate the citizens of Pencrest. So questions have been submitted by members of the community through our media, and you can follow us at Pencrest S A Gestures Club, or there. But from those, we created a list dealing with important issues that popped up frequently that the community really wants the candidates to be asked. So both from the Pencrests, we have Jace DeJocke, who will moderate, and Kaylee Reynolds, who will be timekeeping. So ninety seconds will be allotted for opening introductions and closing remarks. Timekeepers, or timekeeper in this case, will be given, will give a signal of a yellow card for fifteen seconds remaining, and a red card when time is up. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Jace.
Good evening. I am Jace DeJocke, and I will be your moderator. I would like to remind board members that we are here to listen and to respect all candidates equally. Please refrain from cheering and jeering for excessive applause so that everyone can hear from all of the candidates, and we can make the best use of our limited time. We will start with introductions with Scott Stallings.
Alright, thank you.
My name is Scott Stallings. I live in Sagertown Borough. I have a bachelor's degree in psychology and management, church leadership. I have an extensive background in that arena. Also have an extensive background in business, purchasing, maintenance, MRO background, working with vendors. Current health crisis prevention specialist for Crawford County. I provide health services to children, adolescents, and adults. I'm married to the former Willard Marie Maddox, and graduated in 2001 at Sagertown High School. Two children currently in Sagertown, a ten-year-old in the fourth grade, and a seven-year-old in the first grade. I'm running, and it may be altruistic for students, teachers, and staff. I believe that we need to concentrate on academics, allowing teachers to teach, and getting the best curriculum that the district can afford, and giving the teachers what they need to teach. Why is spending, physical responsibility, because let's be honest, the majority of the money that comes to the district is taxed, taxes are something. So we need to be mindful of that. So I open a transparent communication that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will hear from David McRae.
Good evening, everyone. I'm David McRae. I'm a resident of Woodcock Township. I have a wife, two sons, and a daughter. My two sons go to school here at Sagertown. My daughter currently goes to Seating, but when she ages out there, she'll likely end up at Sagertown. I graduated from Meadville as well as my wife. I also went to Allengian College, studied computer science, mathematics. I've been in manufacturing, or manufacturing and management, for almost thirty years. Like Scott, I have experience in acquiring, managing staff, holding budgets, being responsible to shareholders, people of that nature. The reason that I'm here running is because I think that education issues have to take front of center with the board. We seem to get off topic, and I really feel like there are a lot of issues to create a school district. Having been in my whole life, one way or another, I could say that with confidence. I think it can be better for the district if we can get refocused on education issues.
Thank you. Now we will hear from Tiffany Donner.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Donner. I am, uh, uh, hi, I'm Tiffany Donner. I am an Athan Township resident, where I live with my husband and our daughter, who is six months. But I have also two stepkids. One had graduated from Maplewood, and one is currently in Maplewood High School. Also, I have a background in social work, where I have my master's degree from University of Pitt. I am running because I think it's very important to bring back the students' voice, along with being able to say, you know, the way that kids are being educated today is different than when I was educated. And our young people have the voice of how they learn and things that they can do. The teachers have a beat on what's going on with that. I work with young people in Crawford County. I do the independent living program. I manage that. So being able to work with young people and seeing them thrive, and seeing the difference come out in them, and how they can be able to coexist even though they have differences, is what I want to bring to the table. I want to be able to look at things from a different lens, not have all like-minded, and be able to help each other grow, because that's important to me, is being able to grow as a community and for our young people.
Thank you. Now we will hear from Luigi Di Francesco.
Good evening. I'm glad to see some people showed up despite their running. My name is Luigi Di Francesco. I'm the current president of the board. And I'm a spot major in education. I'm a civil engineer, professional engineer, license in Pennsylvania. And due to the fact that I've been retired for quite a while, my experience to you is that I've been on this board for over ten years. And at the beginning, the only thing I always had to do is sit down and learn. Learn how the board member is supposed to act and to learn the requirement of the law. And I decided to run for an additional two years because I'm still concerned about the education of all the students, and what the parents of the students would like to see taught to the kids. And also, I'm concerned about getting a balance in the spending of the budget. We have to come up with a system where we both employees and the board council agreement where the taxpayer of this area will be able to survive and keep their homes. And keep their homes. Well, that's all for now.
Thank you. Now we will hear from Randy Stevorsky.
Hello, good evening. My name is Randy Stevorsky. I'm a resident of Penango Township. That's in the Cambridge Springs school area. I have two daughters that attend Cambridge Springs Elementary School. I'm also a graduate of Cambridge Springs Elementary School. I'm married to Kaylee Smith Stevorsky, who is a Sagertown graduate as well. As a career, I am an educator. I am a civics teacher. I have a degree in secondary and social studies that I obtained from Edinburgh University. I also have a degree from Wilkes University on curriculum instruction design. I am employed in the Durant School District. I've been there for sixteen years, and I've taught civics all sixteen of those years. During my span there, I've also been a volleyball coach. I've been a history day advisor. I have been the social studies department chair. I've also been the class advisor, which is responsible for numerous field trips, including many to Washington, D.C. So I guess you could say I've been serving on this board of the district for my children would be my next step in education and working with education. I'm running because I feel as an educator, I have something that I can contribute to this board. The real issues that are pertaining to the students, the real issues that are pertaining to the teachers. I see it, I live it. I see it every day, in and outside of school. The overburden of the state, the overburden of testing, student apathy, budgets, teacher burnout, teacher shortages, this ever-changing demographic. These are the real issues, and I feel like I can provide that insight.
Thank you. Now we will hear from Marissa Galt.
Hi, I'm Marissa Galt. I am a resident of Peadle Township. I have eight kids, four of which I've already graduated from Sagertown High School. I have two in Pencrest Cyber Academy, and I have one in the fifth grade at Sagertown Elementary School. So I am a parent, and first and foremost, I'm running for the kids. Our kids deserve to have the best education that a school district can offer. I moved here in 2006 specifically for the school district because I believe that my kids would get the best education possible. In recent years, it seems like that's not really happening. We've gone from being the top fifty in the state to the bottom fifty percentile in the state for performance. I am a quality engineer, so basically I solve problems for a living. That's what I do. I worked with teams, we figure out what causes the problems, and then we put in corrective actions and preventive actions to make sure the problems don't occur. Basically, I just want to see this district to get back to what it used to be. And I believe that I can help make that happen.
Thank you. Now we will hear from Allison Biers.
Hi, good evening. I am a resident of Troy Township. Still Crawford County, but there is a little Troy Township that is right down the road to Penango County as well. So I come from the Townville area. I'm a Maplewood graduate, graduated in the class of '08. My husband graduated from Maplewood as well in '09. We have a ten-month-old son at home. I guess he's not at home tonight. He's at swimming lessons with his dad. So that is one of the biggest reasons that I'm sitting up here in front of you guys is to advocate for my kid and, you know, his fellow classmates up and coming, and all the students and teachers, the district staff included. My mom was a district employee for over thirty-five years. She recently retired to become a grandmother. So after, you know, growing up in this area, you know, seeing my mom work for the school and this district her entire life, it has really made me want to preserve this high education for my son and all the other students.
Thank you. Now we will hear from Tim Brown.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. I've been, lived in this district my entire life, from all of Cambridge Springs High School. I've been on the board for the past six years. I was fortunate to be here with a board that had good leadership and good meaning. The last few years, we have lost them, and we have to come back to where it was. Education is just possibly our top priority, not what's in the headlines in the news around the country. We should be focused on Pencrest School District, Pencrest School District alone. We have a long ways to go. We have made strides. The problem is, we don't want to talk about the great things that our students have done, the great things that our teachers have done. We need to start exploiting that more and let the people know that the surrounding communities, the people who want to move into this community, that Pencrest is still a great school district, and we have our stride in improving ourselves. There's a lot the school board can do towards that, and we have to get a school board together that's gonna be an advocate for the students, the teachers, the staff, and the parents and community.
Thank you. Now we will hear from Brian Custer.
Hi, I'm Brian Custer. Born and raised in Meadville, around Tambrac Lake. And I went to Meadville High School. I have a beautiful wife, Joanne, who's out there somewhere. Couldn't see you here. And also, I have three sons. One who graduated standing over there where Luigi is, and we were doing the wave next to the last seat in the back when he graduated. But after I graduated, a little bit after Luigi and a little bit before Tim, I decided to go ahead and go into radio. So I was in broadcast journalism. I was on the air on all the local radio stations in the Meadville area, Franklin area. And also during that time, because I did that for about forty years, and there was always a lifelong goal of wanting to serve my country. So I joined the service. I went into the Army. I served four years in Germany in an artillery unit. And I came back and I re-enlisted and did two years at Fort Drum, New York. After that, back into radio for a while. And then I received a call, a call to ministry. And so Joanne and I rearranged our lives and everything so that we could make that happen. I got the Religious Studies degree from Mercyhurst University. And right after that, we've been preaching together for seven years at Parkville Church of God. And I'm running because we need to stand up for what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We are ready for our first question of the evening. Each candidate gets up to sixty seconds to respond to each question. You will start with the candidate in seat two and rotate through the candidates for first response. When the candidate has fifteen seconds remaining, the timekeeper will hold up the yellow card. When the time is up, she will hold up the red card. Candidates, please respect these time limits so we can get through as many questions as possible. Thank you. We're going to start with David McRae. How do you intend to improve the student performance in the district?
Okay, so I think that understanding student performance has to start with a conversation with the administration in each of the schools, has to start with a conversation with the teachers, with the people who know what students are doing. I also think that we have to engage parents in the education of their children. We can't just bring them into classrooms, dump information into them for forty minutes, and expect them to retain them. Parents have to be a part of the education process. I do think that improvements have to be made using metrics, measurements. Understanding test scores, understanding student attendance, tardiness, willingness to learn, their interactions with their peers. Those things all have to be brought forward, doubled up to the board through the administration, through the superintendent, the proper channels, of course. I think finally, I think giving the children reasons to learn is gonna be important too. Helping them understand how their future is impacted by the choices they make today, and giving them the resources to realize those choices.
Thank you. Tiffany Donner.
I also, I agree that we need to start with our teachers and getting the parents involved. And to take it a little step further is learning how our young people are learning today. Utilizing the technology that's available, the things that we have out there, how they're learning is very important. And again, you know, our teachers and our faculty and our parents know how the children are learning, how their own kids are learning. So bringing all those people to the board and being able to have an honest and open conversation. Also, in order to test, to improve test scores, I do think that we need to ensure that our young people are being able to feel safe at school. If I'm not safe, and I don't feel safe, I can't concentrate on my score. I can't concentrate on learning something new. And so I do think that safety for all is very important, to make sure that it is a conducive environment to learning.
Thank you. Luigi Di Francesco.
One thing we must, everybody should understand, that the administration's responsibility is to come up with a curriculum that follows the law, the Pennsylvania educational laws. The board approves the curriculum, and the teachers have the responsibility to teach the students what's in the curriculum. Now, the board right now is trying to understand what needs to be done to get the students' attention to what the teachers are teaching, and what teachers do not follow the curriculum. It's important, the board does not manage the teachers. That's a responsibility of the administration. And if there is any complaint, yes, there should be, there should be a talking between those who do the work, and if they have any complaints about the administration, they should let the board know.
Thank you. Next time. Randy Stevorsky.
Thank you. I think there's a number of ways to go about this, and to say that there's an easy solution to improving student performance, we'd be fooling ourselves. I concur with Mr. McRae that we need to ensure that the students are first feeling safe in the classroom, that they are engaged in the classrooms, that they have a voice in the classroom, and a sense of belonging in the classroom. There is brain research to that safety in order for them to first learn. Secondly, when it comes to student performance, we need to have a goal as a district for attendance, for retention, for graduation rates, towards what our ranking is in the state. We need to set up a goal, and we need to do some diagnostic testing first to see where we are. This can be done, it is done all the time. We need to use that data. We need to bring the teachers and administrators together to figure out what that measurable goal is towards that outcome. We need to first see where we are, and then come up with a goal and a direction.
Thank you. Marissa Galt.
So I'm a big fan of data. I'm working in quality, and I agree with what has been said previously. We have to look at what's actually going on in the schools. In order to understand those things, we have to capture data, we have to look at metrics, we have to come up with goals. And in order to proceed towards those goals, we have to get opinions from different people, whether it's the teachers, the community, the parents, students. And I also agree that student safety is very important, not only physical safety, but mental health. Children have to be able to learn in a safe environment, and when they're feeling discriminated against, then they're not gonna be safe.
Thank you. Allison Biers.
I would echo what a lot of people have said about involving the parents and community members, first and foremost, the teachers. I have been part of the board of the CASA of Penango County group for several years. Very small organization. The board is a working board, but we have to take a lot of input from the staff because we are not there in the day-to-day to know what's going on. And I see some of that being overlooked maybe at times. So I would strive to work with, you know, the teachers and administrators to see what we need to do in the schools and figure out how as a board we can make that happen.
Thank you. Tim Brown.
Luigi was partially right. It's not our job to take care of daily operations. That's why we hire administrators, and that's their job. But as a school board, our job is to support our administrators and give them the tools they need to succeed. Part of the problem is, we are putting twenty-plus students in K through two, and we're wanting them students to come out of first grade reading. Our teachers are over the top when we have twenty-plus students in the K through two. If you put a smaller class size K through two, those kids will be smarter. They will be better readers, better math, better science. You get them smarter than that, and then as they get older with larger class sizes, they will perform much, much better. Now, in the process of we're teaching, we're teaching to pass tests, that we have to lose if we get our state funding. We don't have a choice. But in doing so, we also have to have the class sizes the teachers will support and our administration with the support needed. Give these students and teachers what they need.
Brian Custer.
Thank you. I believe that there needs to be some accountability. If the numbers for the students are at thirty percent, fifty percent, or whatever, below the others, then someone needs to be accountable for that. And as we hire one person to basically lead the educational department or the educational aspect of the district, I believe that responsibility would fall on the administrator. So I would believe it's the administrator's responsibility to develop an action plan in which he can go to the teachers and get their ideas for an action plan. And then also, I think that administrator can go to the students as well. I don't see board members going to every student and to every teacher, but I would say it all goes to the administrator. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Stallings.
Yeah, so I mean, what's left to say? Every candidate here, maybe, you know, produced points and statements. I would just fall back on, you know, working with the administration, working with the teachers, working with community-based providers, and as a health provider, or as a community, you know, talking about safety. You know, if there's issues at home, and there's food insecurities, parents with substance abuse, struggles, you know, little health struggles, that all ties into the performance in the classroom. So it's not necessarily two plus two is four, and little Johnny, little Susan not understanding. It's an entire wraparound that needs to be approached.
Thank you. Our next question is, do you support or oppose Policy 109.2? Why do I not? We're going to start with Tiffany Donner.
I find this question to be very hard, to be honest, to be a yes or no question. I don't believe it's a yes or no question. Do I believe that there are adult books out there that do not belong to a school? Yes. I have a hard time because, to me, this is not the most important question out there. I get why it's very important to some people, and I do understand that. I do think that there is a policy already in place prior to this policy being made that gave the parents the right to decide if their child should have, be able to check that book out. I do think that we should be able to look at the utilization of our high schools. I do think that our elementary schools probably ran out of books a lot more than our high schools are. I want to again, give it back to the parents who have the choice on what their child is able to read and what their child is not able to read.
Thank you. Luigi Di Francesco.
There's certain things that everybody should understand. We cannot have available what the law prohibits to provide to minors. The policy question that was passed long ago was to prevent, to prevent, to prevent any trouble for the administrators and the board. Because once the board approves something, the, each board member has to make sure that we comply with the law, that we don't break any law. Now, this policy was passed for the only reason, to prevent any pornographic material, period. There was no book banning, no nothing, no, there was no attack against any, any, any other groups or whatever. The idea that the board has to follow the law, the educational laws, and even the civil laws or criminal laws.
That's all I can say right now.
Randy Stevorsky.
Thank you. I think the concerning thing regarding 109.2 was how it was passed without a system of checks and balances in place, without a solicitor present. And that becomes difficult to swallow, and I think that causes a lot of contention and division. I would be good with any policy, as long as it's within the confines of the law. I am not, I'm a conservative. I don't like big government overreaching. Perhaps, potentially, this policy is overreaching. We don't know. A lot of intel, we have no way of knowing that. It's potentially infringing upon rights. I also understand that in our district, we have a really unique circumstance. We have seven through twelve in one miller, one library. We need to consider those things. There are materials that are not acceptable in front of young boys and minors. But we also have the rule of law that we have to pass with as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Marissa Galt.
I oppose Policy 109.2. I agree with Mr. Stevorsky that it was not passed. He is the right way. The law that Mr. Di Francesco is referencing actually is a code in the law that says that you have to take the entire work into consideration, which this policy does not do. It focuses on specific passages in the books, and those are considered to be pornographic, based solely on one person's opinion, and without taking any consideration for. They are losing the Miller Test, which is the test old dead librarians use to decide whether a book should be used to elaborate or not. And I think it's a form of censorship.
Thank you. Allison Biers.
I think to answer the question of whether I agree or disagree, it's not really about me and whether I agree or disagree with the policy. It's about the students and what's in their best interest. Um, so, uh, I guess I would say, um, that the way the policy came about is, is out of my hands. I don't know what I would have done in that situation or what decisions I would have been faced with, um, but I, I do think, uh, that at one point or another, that that's going to come back up in, in the school. Um, you know, we, we will have to maybe deal with it again, uh, at another time. Uh, but I, I would, um, I would like to see the, uh, the whole community having input in that and that we are within the confines of the law as well.
Thank you, Tim Brown.
Uh, yeah, 109.2, quite honestly, I'm sick of talking about it. Uh, 109.2 passed, it's in the books, whether I agree with it or not, it doesn't matter. Our library is very limited, it's not a full access library anymore. Uh, many of the books hadn't even been checked out in the past five years. Uh, some had so much dust on it, uh, they were causing people sneezing when they was getting it out. So until this policy come around, most kids didn't even know about the books or even care about the books. Uh, our students were walking around with iPhones and smartphones. They have way more capabilities than what's in the libraries. They can pull up their books on their smartphone, walk around, read, not think one day to feel about it. So whether I support 109.2, I did support it, I just didn't support the way it was done.
Thank you, Ryan Custard.
Yes, uh, and I'm going to absolutely say that I would have been for it had I been here when it was already decided upon. I believe it's up to the parents to decide, but when you have a range of students from very young to seniors going on, that, uh, you have to protect the most vulnerable, the youngest. So to say that, that you're just going to allow open access for everyone, for even the youngest that will have access, you can't do it. Leave it to the parents. The parents, if you want to show your kids whatever you want, go to the public library group, go ahead. Be my guest, but not on my watch. So I would say no, I, I am against that because we have to protect our kids, the youngest among us at the least, and it's the parents' decision.
Thank you, Scott Stone.
Please step fastly and I can understand your question.
Uh, so my position on 109.2, uh, it's a bad policy, uh, just the way it was passed in general, I mean, here for Pencrest, Crawford County, pretty much know how that made out. Um, all policies need to be revised from time to time to be looked at, what may have been passed ten years ago is not relevant now and needs to be tweaked or updated. Um, I mean, uh, Luigi's letter to the energy here a few weeks ago already stated that there's already two P A laws on the books regarding, uh, you know, material. So instead of addressing, you know, bigger issues like, you know, teacher contracts and getting, uh, contract in, in place, this is what the current board spent their time and resources on. Um, there are books that my kids weren't, uh, shouldn't read, probably. It is not my job to tell somebody else's parent what their child is allowed to read or not. If that's the case, then we need to look at my book, as a theology major, David M. Shiva, I mean, that's come on, that's pretty, you know, pretty discreet.
Thank you, David McGrath.
Uh, so I didn't really start paying attention to this issue until it was already about passed. Uh, but what I will say is I think that the policy is sort of a good thing, which is to protect children. I do agree with that. I think that the policy may have been enacted in a way that was more disruptive than it had to be by law, uh, because I think maybe more base behavior, more base beliefs that I'm for freedom of choice for every one of us, all of us, right? And in this case, because we're talking about minors, the freedom of choice within the boundary of the law, so I have to agree with Mr. Di Francesco on how it is within the boundary of the law, orientation of law. Um, the freedom of choice has to be preserved for the parents and the kids, right? The school board has to comply with the law, the administration has to comply with the policies, and we all have to comply with the law.
Thank you. Our next question, Pencrest is suffering from a teacher shortage and has additionally lost a number of gifted and experienced teachers they did have. Explain how you intend to make Pencrest a district that teachers want to be in and how you plan to support that.
That's the title of the hearing. I should get the title of the version for just a second. Where's the S? The bottom of the word.
Use the microphone, if you haven't heard yet.
Okay, appreciate the ready question.
The question is that the district has, uh, experienced a teacher shortage, correct? Well, I, I, to be honest, I really don't know if they really have a shortage, considering that we have so many substitute teachers that are available out there. But if it, if it is, Pencrest is being very generous as far as paying teachers, and, and I don't think it's money that will attract more teachers. The teacher needs, you know, those individuals that will go to school and want to become teachers, they have to have it in their heart, that they're willing to teach the kids and become, become attached to, to, to those kids so they can learn and, and educate them as best as they can. Now, if there is a shortage, well, how do we attract the new, new teachers? I don't think money is the answer.
Brice Borowski.
Thank you. There is a teacher shortage. I have it here, ten years ago, the state of Pennsylvania gave out fifteen thousand new teaching certificates. Last year, four thousand, that's a drop of seventy percent. There is a teacher shortage. I appreciate the work substitutes do, but they're not as highly trained as those with degrees, with master's degrees. Comparing the two is, if not comparable, let's say we have enough subs, so we have enough teachers. So resolve, and we need to make sure that our teachers are deserving the praise that they get and that they do. Just today, I got a message from the Plus Dojo in the afternoon, after hours, our teachers were communicating with parents. Here's the pitch board. Here's students that took first place in an academic competition. I did the same club in Gerard. There's teachers behind these kids, they deserve praise. They do not deserve to go to work every day, see signs in the yard accusing them of doing something that wrong. We can at least eliminate that and show teachers that they are appreciative and we appreciate the work, extra hours they put in, we can at least attract new teachers.
Thank you, Nerissa Ball.
So I agree with Mr. Di Francesco that, uh, it's not about the money necessarily. I think that, uh, teachers are, um, overworked. I think that they have a lot more on their plates than they used to, um, and I don't think that they're being appreciated. They're not, um, feeling like they're in a well-known work environment. Um, teachers are being attacked for their, um, beliefs, for things that they don't necessarily teach, but they might express in class as their own opinion, making it clear that it's their opinion. Um, so we need to make sure that teachers want to stay here, first of all. And the way to attract more teachers is not to end up in the news constantly for all the wrong reasons.
Thank you, Allison Beers.
Um, so one of the big things that I've heard from some of the teachers is, uh, they want a contract. Um, I think that they've been, you know, waiting for several years for that stability. Um, we want teachers to stay, so we want to, uh, keep them happy and give them what they need to teach our kids. Um, I, I know that a lot of people got to experience being teachers a couple of years ago when COVID happened and, you know, kids were learning at home. Um, and I have a kid at that time, I would be, and for my little boy, I am not a good teacher to, you know, some, some extent, those, that, they, those things need to be in the classroom, love to the train professionals. Um, I guess is my point, that, uh, I, I would like to, uh, see that happening, uh, more often. I know I have, uh, some teachers and administrators in my family and the, you know, the obstacles that they face on, on top of the, the job itself, um, and working on supporting them.
Thank you, Tim Brown.
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, teacher shortage, I don't know where some numbers come from, but we are, we're teacher shortage, it is over sixty-eight percent, close to fifty. Uh, teachers, I'm married to a teacher, so I see what goes on, and trust me, you couldn't pay me enough to hear. Uh, this, this, this school has become divisive. Uh, we haven't been the support network we need to, and as far as, uh, sub, or, uh, subs, substitutes coming in, we have been in classrooms every day in this district with no teacher. So for you to sit there and say we have a lot of teachers, you better get your facts right. We have dozens of classrooms in this district, every day, and we have lots of substitutes. But to you, it's probably, I don't have the answer.
Thank you, Ryan Custard.
Thank you. I believe some people, majority of teachers are doing what they want to do and beyond. But I feel there are a number, very small number of teachers who are choosing an agenda over an education. And I think some of them who choose not to be in a union are because of the things that they're being forced to do from the union, beyond education. Let the teachers teach. Let them stick to the curriculum and leave everything outside of the curriculum, outside of the classroom. It's so simple. And the last board meeting, it was said, these teachers were removed in 2014. I heard that said. What has been done since 2014 to replace them? We need to make it desirable for them to come back.
Thank you, Scott Stone.
Yeah, so I think first study is, uh, to retain and recruit teachers is a board that has their back. The board may not agree with a teacher or be, uh, you know, be a hundred percent, uh, friends with the teachers, with the teachers, we can know at the end of the day, it, it, the board supports them, good or bad or indifferent, the board supports them, it's not hostile toward the teachers. Um, you know, it's more of a, yeah, I mean, we all go to work because of the check we did, you know, we're in the payday, but I've made a lot more money in my career than I am now, but I'm a hundred percent more satisfied doing what I'm doing now, and, uh, there, there's not a cookie cutter answer to this. I mean, whether it's here or in Gerard District or wherever, but I, I think it starts with the board that is, uh, responsible and treats the teachers with respect.
Thank you, David McGrath.
So I think that the, the numbers I ran you stated, I wasn't aware of, I was only just stating, but, um, that's consistent with my experience. There just aren't as many teachers as there used to be. Um, and Pencrest, like every other school district, has to compete for those resources. So in the private sector, which is where I've spent my thirty years, we do that by creating an environment people want to be in. We decrease chaos, we decrease turnover, we try to limit the controversies that happen, right? And we ha, and we handle them in a professional way. We handle them, uh, one-on-one, face-to-face with the person creating the controversy, and that limits its impact on everyone around us. And I also am married to a teacher like Mr. Brown. And I can tell you that if my wife could go in her classroom and teach, close the door and teach, she would be on cloud nine. That's what she wants to do every day. And the controversy that walks the hallway is what causes her consternation, and I hear about it with her kids, so be free to that.
Thank you, Tiffany Donner.
Yeah, uh, I'm sorry. I don't think that there is, um, like, like everyone's kind of saying, a cookie cutter answer for what needs to happen. I do one hundred percent agree that we need to be able to pull our teachers together and find out what is going on, um, what makes them stay. So having like stay interviews instead of just exit interviews, uh, being able to talk to people openly and be able to hear the harsh words of, you know, something that maybe I don't like. That's okay, I don't have to agree with everything. But I also think it's important that this isn't just a Pencrest concern, um, it's also looking at the different school districts in our sister school districts. You know, what are they doing that's innovative? You know, we need to think outside the box, we need to create an environment that makes people want to be here to help them learn. Our teachers are teachers because they have a passion for it. I have a passion for child welfare if our amount of people transitioning, and that's why I do what I do. So we need to, we need to dig into what the passion is and give that passion back.
Thank you. Our next question, what is CRT and how does it affect our school district? Brice Borowski.
That's a good question. So we have the actuality of CRT, and then we have the optics of CRT. And I believe they are different, but they often get thrown into the same basket. Uh, and so I'll discuss the optics of what people believe CRT is. Well, I'm sorry, but first, it's a college-level sociological course. It's, it's meant for high-level learning institutions. Optics are that CRT potentially, uh, is being crept into our socialized curriculum and teaching students to be, uh, I guess, white privilege perhaps? I don't know. I have the standards from civ, for civics, Pennsylvania, K through twelve, they're my bookbag, carry it with me. I know them like the back of my hand. I teach civics, I have a large civics curriculum in my own district. Everything in there is proper civics. I advocate for Act Thirty-Five, which requires every student to take the naturalization test before graduation. I advocate for that. That's proper civics instruction. I do not see that at all in our building.
Thank you, Nerissa Ball.
Um, so I, I have read a lot of CRT a little bit, and I agree that it is a powerful force. Um, a lot of people seem to believe that CRT is diversity and equity and inclusion, um, which I, I really fail to find the problem. I don't see how it's a problem to teach kids that other people are different from them and that you should include everyone, um, and be able to get along with everyone. Um, I'm, I don't see the problem with that. So, uh, to me, CRT as a reality is not being taught in our schools. The things that people believe CRT to be, uh, I'm not seeing the issue with that being taught in our schools, um, either.
Thank you, Allison Beers.
So I, uh, understand that CRT was, um, you know, brought up a few years ago in, in our district, that there were, you know, concerns that those type of things were, were happening. Um, I have this, I have this lesson in, uh, college-level courses, as these other two, um, have also said. So I, I think that in learning history, we do, um, we learn, um, the fundamentals, but everybody picks up on their own understanding and interpretation of, of those things. Um, and some borderline, you know, parents or other people may believe that those things are, are borderline, uh, to be an issue. Uh, I think that there is a policy that was, uh, to address this, that was passed last year, um, so I, I think we need to be worrying about what is happening in, in the district.
Thank you, Tim Brown.
Uh, yeah, CRT, we passed a policy two years ago, if I remember correctly, against CRT, and it was voted in, I'm gonna say. Uh, at this point, it's up to the administrators to make sure the teachers aren't going to happen. But in all fairness, I have talked to many, many teachers in our district, and I just don't see, I, I know there's, I know there are a few people here that say it is, and I know it has happened, but I think that probably has been dealt with, and I don't think it's going to be a, uh, uh, be a problem yet. Uh, our district has so many issues, and the problem is, here's a prime example, we bring up 109.2, we bring up CRT, I don't know what else we're going to bring up. Uh, we're not focusing on the great things that we're doing.
Thank you, Ryan Custard.
CRT is a college course, yes, but it is so much more, and I think there are many things that are going on in this district that people don't want to talk about, but that are happening. CRT is divisive. The reason it's coming back up is because, uh, Governor Wolf Two Point O Shapiro is bringing it back, and that's why we're in a lawsuit, to make sure that it doesn't come back. CRT is negative. CRT is negative, divisive, racist, and it doesn't have a dang thing to do with reading, writing, and, thank you.
Thank you, Scott Stallings.
Yeah, so, uh, CRT, I, I know what's already decided, of course, and we do a policy, district policy one nineteen addressed that. Uh, I encourage you all to go back in March of twenty twenty-two and watch, uh, and, and watch the, uh, theme. My take, the, the board meeting, the policy was amended, uh, those, and this was added to it. Uh, what I take away is that nobody in the current board that voted on the last March, twenty-five, on CRT was. So that's kind of problematic. Um, again, we're concentrating on something that a policy's already in place. A year later, we've got bigger issues. We've got, we've got a teacher contract, as we said. We've got students, academic performers, that needs to be, uh, looking to address. We need to quit beating the dead horse.
Thank you, David McGrath.
Okay, so the question was, what's CRT? So like others have said, it is a college-level course. It's more importantly, it's a framework that allows you to understand decisions considering race. All right, so nobody wanted to say the race words, but that's what it is. Um, and I think it's asking far, far too much of high school-age kids and younger to consider things like in-out, in-out group, right? Or unconscious bias, or CRT. Those things are very, very nuanced. We're all subject to our own biases, right? And to pretend they don't exist is not fair to ourselves or those around us. But I also think we've let CRT become something of the boogeyman, right? If you think CRT is evil, if you think CRT is racist, then you absolutely should address that with the people you love. And I think it, I think the board's policy, how it was written one way or another, I don't know what I can tell you is, I don't think CRT being taught in our schools is the right thing, because it's not age-based.
Thank you, Tiffany Donner.
Yeah, so CRT is critical race theory, um, in case somebody doesn't know that.
I actually took a, when it all came about, I took a training with professors that are actually trained in teaching this. It came from nineteen seventies, from lawyers. Um, lawyers are actually the ones who created the theory. Um, and it is that, it's a theory, and it's a college-based theory. And I am a little concerned that we are talking about CRT, but really, which is a theory that is for college, but I do think that in this school district, there's a different underlying concern that people are worried about when it comes to race relations, um, and how that's being taught, how it's being looked at, um, and using words, you know, like white privilege and all those things. I do think that that is a different concern that people have, and we're calling it critical race theory um, instead of really talking about what the underlying concern is. That's what I would like to get down to. I don't think that critical race theory is appropriate for our school because it is for a college base, and that's from the people that actually train it when I went to a training for that.
Thank you, Luigi Di Francesco.
Thank you. Critical race theory. The, uh, what's wrong right away is, is, is that the actual name, CRT, critical race theory. They try to compare this, what they teach and they claim they teach in, in university, to compare to the Galileo theory, to Newton theory, even Einstein theory. It's not a theory, it's just a notation to, to the American people. And then right now, we're concerned that that would not, never to be taught in, you know, elementary, in, in schools, you know, mentally, in secondary school. Why? Because they think what CRT teaches is to hate the, the parents for some, some imaginable wrongdoing that was done in the past and their own country. We have a system that everybody's equal. And right now, oh, and whatever happened in the past has been gone, and there is no need to, to indoctrinate the, the American people, especially the young.
Thank you. Our next question. Tell us about your high school experience and perhaps a memory that sticks with you. We're going to start with Yurisagol.
Uh, my high school experience was with a period of kids.
Tell us about your high school experience and perhaps a memory that sticks with you.
Okay, um, I don't know how many people here liked me, but I did not like high school. I was not the cool kid, uh, was quite bitter, I was a drama geek, and, um, so I didn't have a great high school experience. However, the best experiences I had were with teachers who took the time to, um, understand me, to encourage me, and to, you know, encourage me to explore my talents. Um, that was absolutely the best part of my high school experience, is, is the teachers. Some teachers I liked more than others, so not so much, but that's, and that's another reason why I think we really need to appreciate everything that teachers do for people, because a good teacher can really change the trajectory of a child's life.
Thank you, Allison Beers.
Um, I'm glad that Priscilla went first and said that she wasn't a great student, because that's where I was going to, that's what I was going to say. Um, I did struggle a little in high school as well, I was not a great student. I did whatever I could to get out of going to school. And then when you graduate, you get into the real world, and you learn what it's like to work with people sometimes who wish you had more of that knowledge, that the teachers are telling you, don't forget this. Um, so I had a lot of great memories in school. I was fortunate to, to do a lot of things. I know some class, classes after me didn't get to do, um, like camp pitch, um, but we used to do a sixth grade, like an overnight trip, uh, with a bunch of pre-teens, can you imagine? Uh, I know I was the one of the teachers and counselors back in the day, that we always see now trying to get in trouble, but, uh, that's one of my good memories, because some things, um, that I had the opportunity to do, uh, why I won't repeat.
Thank you, Tim Brown.
Camp pitch, I remember that. Uh, school, high school experience is, is, I was cop trucks, I was brought up with it, I was brought up, I, I, and I just, all I could do, stay in school. But it wasn't that I had trouble, just school was not my thing. But it's funny, marrying a teacher, uh, I'd have a different outlook on that. And being on the school board, raising three daughters, uh, definitely a different outlook. I had great experiences, and I wish I really raised things better. But I have no regrets, and where I'm at in life is, I'm very happy. So, but I'm proud to be a alumni candidate.
Thank you, Brian Huster.
My high school experience was extremely positive. Not that I got along with every teacher, but we're all different, and it's about developing the relationship with the teacher. Maybe his teacher's stern, but they're looking out for our best interests. And, I mean, I had teachers that, that failed me, and rightfully so. But thankfully, my mother said, you're going back to that teacher in the next year, and you're gonna get through. And I developed a relationship with a teacher that I despised, and I learned that they had my interests at heart. That's, they're, and so many teachers, that's all they want, is for the students to succeed. And sometimes the students just need to knock on that wood head and say, and see them, so that they can just, thank you.
Thank you, Scott Stallings.
Yeah, so I graduated high school like I did college, subacum dinte, by the skin of my teeth, but I had a great time. Uh, I, I mean, Coach Youngblood, and I went to enough high school in enough form, class ninety-six, all with high parents. Uh, Coach Youngblood, uh, Coach White, uh, uh, Miss Amos, I, you know, I did chorus, I did drama band, marching band, played in the school jazz, did football, weightlifting, so, so, you know, I, it was the teachers. At the end of the day, it was, it was Miss Amos that, even, even after something I did on my own that was not too smart, she went to my mom and said, hey, Scott needs to continue being a music maker. It was Miss White who, who told me that, hey, you know, there, there's, you can go to college. So at the end of the day, it was the teachers, and I did.
Thank you, David McGrath.
Oh yeah, so I went to Maplewood until the end of my freshman year, and I moved to Middo. So I was the very definition of an outlander, a person who didn't belong. So, uh, the only friend who I really had was the hockey team. So I played ice hockey in my whole high school career, which was great. Uh, but it taught me, taught me teamwork, it taught me loyalty, it taught me willingness to sacrifice so that everybody could, could get better and move on. I think at the same time, uh, much like Scott, I had a math teacher who, who saw something he made, and he fostered it. He spent time with me one-on-one after school, saying, look, you can contribute in mathematics, you can contribute in computer science. And I didn't believe any of that until he said so. And if he hadn't said it, I would have had a completely different trajectory in my soccer career. So ultimately, it was the teacher who chose that, uh, who chose to believe in me and try and.
Thank you, Tiffany Donner.
I liked high school only for the learning, because I'm a nerd, and I'm okay with saying nerd. Uh, I love learning, I still love learning, I take every opportunity to learn. Uh, and at the same time, I didn't like to drama, but I would not be who I am today if I didn't have an extracurricular, uh, class, I would say. So it was an after-school, it was called peer helpers. My job as a peer helper was to help seventh graders coming into the high school, um, build friends. So somebody was sitting at lunch by themselves, I sat with them, helped them. Someone needed tutoring, I helped them. Someone was getting bullied, I helped them. Um, and so I was determined I was gonna be an electrical engineer. I was determined that was my life, that was it. And then I became a peer helper and a touchy-feely, freaking, um, social worker, and I have a bleeding heart, and it's because I love it. And if I didn't have that opportunity, I would not be who I am today.
Thank you, Luigi Di Francesco.
Well, unfortunately, my, my high school experience came through my children, that they all, my four children who graduated from Maplewood High School. And believe me, I regret that I was not able to attend the, the high schools in the United States of America. And then, there's not much I can say, I can only tell you this, that my life has not been easy, because of, because of the, the situation I was in with my family, going back and forth from, from Europe to here. And it was not easy. And I, I really regret that I was not able to attend the American schools, especially when I saw my kids, they had all, everything they went through, and I helped them a lot with their, with their future lives. They've got along fine with the teachers, and I got, got fine with the teacher that, that I thought they, they showed up bad for, at least one daughter of mine.
Thank you, Randy Staborski.
Thank you. So I graduated, uh, came to Springs near two thousand and three, twenty years ago. And reflecting back on my experience in high school, uh, I'm coming to realize this, unfortunately, perhaps too late now, that words matter. Words have impact. Even nonverbals matter to a child. Whether it's from a coach, or a teacher, or any other, uh, school faculty member, uh, outside the family, simple words can have a drastic impact on a child's life and can completely change direction. Uh, looking back now, as I'm a teacher, uh, I've gotten to know some of my former teachers very well, and I thank them for those words that they gave me, uh, because they put me where I am today. If I would've told you twenty years ago, I'd be standing up here running for school board in my child's school, I wouldn't have told you. If I was a ten-year varsity coach, I would have told you. Employed as a middle school teacher for sixteen years, I wouldn't have told you. But I was able to do that, push myself, because I had those kind words, uh, that changed my path back in this world.
Thank you. Our next question is, our school board has been involved in a number of highly publicized controversies, resulting in a view that may have behaved unethically. How do you plan to restore confidence in our school board and its actions? We're gonna start with Allison Beers.
Um, I kind of wrap myself on just being a respectful person. Um, just, uh, I try to meet people where they are, um, and have the understanding that I, I don't know what they're, you know, going through, um, and, uh, I, I don't like conflict, I don't like to fight with people. Um, so I, I just feel like being transparent. If you have a question, ask me, I, I'll tell you the answer. Like, um, I, I may not agree with what you have to say, but at the end of the day, this is about the, the children. So like, my political, religious, personal beliefs are, you know, kind of set aside.
Thank you, Tim Brown.
Um, school board differences, uh, you know, we didn't have it. A few years ago, we had honest discussions, we had open ideas, we had, we didn't have the type of doors discussions, and things brought to the rest of the board members, I don't know, that creates a lot of divisiveness. Uh, and anytime you're gonna have divisiveness, you're gonna have differences. Uh, I, I've been guilty as much as anybody, and I have apologized some, but there's a point where if you're not being heard, it's frustrating. Uh, it, it's, it's just the fact, you have to have a board with nine members who don't all agree. We have to have different ideas, we have to have open discussions, we have to have good dialogue, and we have to have good work.
Thank you, Brian Huster.
Relatively new to this, but I'm not, not very new to, um, the media projecting Pencrest as this horrible place. And the, the more that the media, the paper, wherever, promotes Pencrest as this horrible place, the more people start to believe it. And the more that I start coming to the meetings, I'm seeing people taking jabs at each other about something that happened months ago. And I'm hearing stories of people in the parking lot chasing after each other and screaming at each other. What is that? There's no respect. There's people in the audience, when somebody comes up to talk, like, eh, what is that? It's ignorant and it's rude. There shouldn't be an R or a T. It's not personal. It's from our kids. We just gotta get past all that and work together.
Thank you, Scott Stallings.
Yeah, so respect, dialogue, open, honest communication, uh, truth matters, uh, honesty, integrity matters. And to be honest with you, I, I've been briefly following the board for about three years now. Um, got involved coming to meetings last year, and just gonna be honest with you there, I'm not gonna walk, I ain't gonna sugarcoat it. It, there's a lot of hostility, a lot of, um, untruthfulness, a lot of unethical behaviors on this current board, and that's wrong, because it is about the students, it's about the staff, it's about the residents of this district. And, you know, a board needs to be known, a board needs to be behind the scenes. You don't need it being the, the local media, raving, or, you know, goofing.
Thank you, David McGrath.
Uh, I think that it definitely has to start with respect, protecting the other people up here. Everyone has a message without that. Um, so I agree with that. I also think, almost as importantly, it'll be about setting expectations for, for ourselves and the people around us, right? methods of maintaining the forums, ways of communicating data. Don't, don't assert some fact out of space to pull it out of thin air, and then not allow a challenge to it, and not offer up any data to support that fact. Not too much of that happens in the community forum, in my opinion. And I think realistically, you know, the opportunity to have a back-and-forth conversation with the other members of the board, that doesn't result in a fight, but an argument, where that person, if I disagree with them, says, oh, this is why I believe what I believe. And I have the opportunity to say, this is why I believe what I believe. At the end, we may not agree, but we'll part having that in an argument, not a fight.
Thank you, Tiffany Donner.
So, I, I didn't hear you. So I do believe in positive intent. I think that people come into it, especially, I would really hope that somebody's not going to a school board to, to do backdates. Positive intent. I do get passionate, and I can get fiery, but at the same time, I can be told, like, hey, you know, we need to humble you. Yes, please, please do. I am not afraid to say I'm sorry, I was wrong. And I think that we need to be able to have those conversations, uh, and be able to allow people to be held open to the needs. Beauty of the being is beautiful, and all of our differences. And coming to the board and being able to say, I don't agree with you, but that's okay, because I feel like you hurt me. As long as we can hear each other and our points. As long as we can hear each other and our points, then I do think that that degree of cohesiveness of school board serves their students and their families, it is not served.
Thank you, Luigi Di Francesco.
I can't remember, but some of the candidates are here, I don't know if they ever attended the board before, because it still raised a lot of news to me. Now, a board has to be conducted civilly and in accordance to the parliamentary rules. So far, so far, I tried to do that. To make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak and express their opinion on the board agenda. We're not there, you know, to discuss anything that comes out of the blue. There is an agenda that we have to accomplish and discuss because of then, two days after that, we're going to go on it. So, we still have some misinformation that I explained to the left and the right, and it's still, I got to hit it right here. So, please, attend the board meetings and see what happens. Because everybody gets a chance and everybody sees what.
Thank you, Reni Staborzki.
Would you mind repeating, is there a second part to your question?
Our school board has been involved in a number of highly publicized controversies resulting in a view that may have behaved unethically. How do you plan to restore confidence in our school board and its actions?
Okay. I think modeling, seeking first to understand rather than to be understood, is something I like to live by. Trying to come to a win-win compromise. You're only going to get that compromise, and I said this earlier, is if you have a direction and you set a goal, we may have this goal, let's say it's academic improvement or a teacher contract or building improvement, this may be our goal. And if we all agree to that goal, we may have disagreements, but at the end of the day, we can seek win-win resolutions because we all want that same goal. So I would answer your question, I think it begins with setting goals and modeling your behavior, seeking first understanding. Does I have more time? I believe that I do have a lot I can offer to the board, there's a lot of things I need to learn about the board. And I look forward to that chapter.
Thank you, Marissa Gold.
I believe that transparency is key. A lot of people seem to be confused about what's going on behind closed doors. There is evidence that things go on behind closed doors. And, you know, that takes the trust away from the public. People start to say, "Hey, you know, why, why is this happening in secret?" And, you know, there are executive sessions, and there is stuff that does need to be, you know, not made public, but when there are heated violations of the sunshine law, or even the question that the sunshine law has possibly been violated, then you're not doing your job to make sure that everything is transparent as it should be to the public.
Thank you. Our next question is what role should religion have in establishing public school curriculum and policies? And Brown?
What role should religion have?
What role should religion have in establishing public school curriculum and policies?
Uh... Well, that's... I'm going to use up my time, thank you. Uh, role of religion, I mean, somebody said to me at a couple of board meetings, though, that religion should never come to the school. But for me, religion should go with me everywhere I go. That's my faith, that's what I believe in. All my decisions should be made based on that. When it comes to curriculum, I don't break the curriculum, I don't choose the curriculum. I go by the curriculum that Mr. Newman currently breaks to us, and we have a chance to observe it, and we have a chance to look at it, and we have a chance to blow it. And we decide if it's what we think is the best. As part of religion and curriculum, boy, you just got me on that. I don't have the right answer to that, but I think part of the problem with society is we take religion out of everything. And I don't think it would be bad to bring religion back in, but there are laws that we have to follow, and there's a way of going, a way of not.
Thank you, Brian Custer.
There are so many different religions. And I've actually had people come to me and say, "Well, what about separation of church and state? You're a pastor, should you be there?" Seven of the founding fathers were pastors who signed the Declaration of Things. We're based on beliefs. We all have different beliefs, but I know my friend here, and many go to church on Sundays. We have our beliefs. And that's the foundation of how we treat each other. Love each other as you would have been loved. Love one another. That's, we've been commanded to do that. So whether the curriculum is this, that, or the other, it's how we treat each other and love each other.
Thank you, Scott Stallings.
Yeah, so, for example, my two daughters, they go to, at least time, we have to decide on the permission system. Are we going to teach Judaism, Islam, Hinduism? You know, where the curricula is. That's all set by the state, and there are state, federal laws that govern that. Do I have a problem with there being a fellowship Christian athletes or fellowship Christian students? Absolutely not. When we transverse that, if somebody wants a fellowship of Hindu students or fellowship of Islamic students, there has to be that avenue, and that's done. So there's, there's not a yes or no answer. And as far as curriculum, word study, I encourage everybody here to go off of Mr. Custer, who's a theist, the founding fathers were theists. So I encourage everybody to Google that, kind of do a word study of that, and not figure that they were necessarily tributary in their theological views.
Thank you, David McGrath.
Also, I think it would be, let me address it personally, the curriculum. So I think it would be foolish to say that I can separate who I am and the decisions that I've made from my religion, my faith, my ethics, and my morality. Those all, those things are all integral to me. I can't separate one out and make a decision for that. And I doubt anyone, me, or Ken. As it relates to curriculum, I don't think that the school should be teaching a particular religion. I do believe that. Despite the fact that the majority of us are Christian of one variation or another, I think that the founding fathers, who were theists, some were, you have to argue on that one, I don't know, or pastors, they specifically wrote that out of it. And I do, I do think of both all things. We are a nation of law, right? And I am a person of faith, but we are a nation of law.
Thank you, Tiffany Donner.
Yeah, I agree. I think that there is, if we're going to look at religion in curriculum or any aspect, it should be all religious views. And not only just, religion has spirituality. There's a lot of people that are more spiritual than we are, you know, as a cookie cutter religion. And if we're going to look at it, we need to look at inclusivity for all of our students, not just one religious view over the other. I think that everybody should be welcome to practice and be who they are in school to feel safe. When it comes to curriculum, I think that it needs to be looked at, what's the best curriculum just in general for our young people? What's going to be the best curriculum for our young people in Penncrest? Which might be different than Kanyan, which might be different than other school districts. We need to look at what curriculum is in the best interest for our young people, not just based on a religious or another circumstance.
Thank you, Luigi Di Francesco.
Thank you. I think that there is a misconception that teaching any religion will be against the Constitution. However, what I'm saying, what I would like to say is, not to call any religion, but let's teach it our students, the goodness of our human beings, to be respected for each other, to understand that taking a life of another human being is terrible. That we're all the same, and we all should respect, especially, their life or others. If we teach the everybody to be nice guys and love everybody else, maybe we could stop this sense of assuring that's going on throughout the country. And that, believe me, I think something is missing. Our kids, our kids must know to respect everybody else and each other. And that, I believe, that would cut a lot of losses of life.
Thank you, Reni Staborzki.
Thank you. Question about student rights here in my wheelhouse here, so when we discuss the idea of separation of church and state, I feel like sometimes it's misunderstood. Separation of church and state doesn't mean we need to scrub clean religion out of public life. The government and the bill of rights is made to protect and make room for religion in public life. And so when it comes to schools, a school can't, say, tip the balance of a scale in favor of one religion over another, or in favor of religion versus non-religion. According to Supreme Court in the Lemon Test, they would determine that that's too much of an entanglement. So when it comes to separation of church and state, it's not about getting rid of it. Teachers are allowed, don't have a cross around their neck. A student is allowed to read a Bible in classroom if they want to. Second part about the curriculum is our curriculum is driven by state standards. And in the social studies and in the humanities, there are standards about religion. About religion, not teaching a religion, but teaching about religion. You can have secular conversations about religion in class.
Thank you, Marissa Gold.
So I agree that religion doesn't need to be scrubbed clean from public life. It's... The great thing about America is that there are melting bombs, so there's people with all manner of religious systems. Just because a majority of the students are likely Christian, does not mean that Christianity is taught. Kids can learn about different religions without being taught that this is the truth. And so I think it's important that we make room for those kinds of things without saying that this is how it is and this is, you know, how you must follow. But as far as this curriculum, I don't necessarily think that it needs to be a major part of our curriculum, but, you know, as several people have said, it is a part of individual people.
Thank you, Alison Beers.
Glad I got the chance to go last on this one, because I'm not sure if I've spoken earlier when I said that I would put my beliefs aside. Obviously, my beliefs would factor into decisions that I'm making, but I, one way or another, love other people's religions as well. So I want to give back a lot, Tiffany said it's just giving like the equal opportunity for all of the different spiritual and religious beliefs. As Randy said, you can have a conversation about them without pushing your beliefs onto them. What I could say is, being a graduate of the district, is that when I got to college and you're around a lot of different people with different beliefs, I wasn't prepared, you know, for some of those things. You learn a very small part of what the other religions are like in school, but you want to have a little bit of knowledge so that you're prepared.
Thank you. Our next question for Brian Custer. What experience with public schools do you have to bring to the table? Did you attend public schools? Did you ever work at a public school? What do you know about running a public school?
I don't believe that the criteria for being a school board member is running, having ever run a school. Yes, I was in the public schools. I was a teacher's assistant down in Vision Quest, where they put forty kids in a room with one teacher and an assistant, and you're trying to wipe the blood off from all the fights. That was my experience with being in the classroom. No, I have no professional experiences as running a school. But I do have basic, basic family values. And I think that they need to be applied in all aspects of our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott Stallings.
So yeah, when I left Florida, I took the subject area of social sciences, sixth and twelfth grade, and I was a teacher. Then it was prior to that. About three months later, we decided to go to a peer. I lived with my wife the first two years of my marriage. She worked at a charter, public charter school, special needs. I volunteer Friday, is my schedule, I have to be off, so I go in and volunteer. I applied to public schools, Florida Public Schools, K-12. I volunteer as a town elementary currently, through the PTCO. So I'm not going to say, tell you, I've got the answers, not what we... What I will tell you is, based upon my personal experiences in my professional life and having got a better relationship with elementary school, I'm willing to vote with sleeves and I can go to work and listen and be respected.
Thank you, David McGrath.
So I don't, I can't claim to have any firsthand experience in public education except for in coaching. So I coach, I'm the assistant coach of the men's soccer team for the three schools in the district. But what I can claim to have is thirty years of experience building teams, building relationships, working in a business environment. And while I'm not going to be so crass as to say that a school district needs to be run as a business, I do think there are parallels, right? The profit that these schools produce for our district, for the people here, is educated individuals who can turn around and contribute to society in your area, right? The person at the counter can count change. The person in the library knows how to help you find a book. These things come from public education and private education. And so to that extent, this is a problem, and that's the profit. That's the part we can't.
Thank you, Tiffany Donner.
I have attended public high school in Lyonsville, I graduated from Lyonsville. Before that, I took a public, a lunch school in Ohio. So, yes, I was part of the public. In my career, I started off at Children and Youth for Propper County, and I worked very closely with every district in Propper County, and some outside for the young people that I serve, doing different needs and stuff like that. The young people that I serve right now are the transition agents of Propper County. And I also work closely with schools, helping develop different plans to get our people to be more successful into transition out of high school and into adulthood. That's the extent of my knowledge, working with the school. I've never ran a school, I'm not a teacher, but I am very much invested in our people in Propper County.
Thank you, Luigi Di Francesco.
Thank you. One thing I would like to emphasize is that the board, the school board, do not micromanage these schools, the districts. That's the responsibility again of the administrators. Now, I could say that, some people might think that because I've been on the board for so long, you know, I know how to run the board, how to run the district. No. The board's responsibility of nine members is to listen to the administrators and make a decision if we agree with the administration, how they want to manage it. I hope they want to manage the district. Period. And, well, that's all there is to say, really. The board is responsible to make the final decision on how the children get educated, and the responsibility falls on the administrators, and then down the line to the teachers.
Thank you, Reni Staborzki.
So, as an educator for sixteen, I've dedicated my life to students who are not my own children. I've dedicated many hours outside my teaching role to students that I've mentioned before. I've been a varsity coach, I was district day advisor, social studies department chair, I've written curriculum, I've been a class advisor. In a few weeks, I'm going to be tallying up about ninety eighth graders around the mall in Washington DC, so I spend a lot of time in front of students. I know what teachers go for. I know that's not necessarily the responsibility of the board, but it's nice to have that input. You need somebody with the experience of what's happening. That's how you work with teachers, with students. I'm also a parent with parents. I work with administrators every single day. That's how you work with administrators. So as a board member, who is an educator, I feel I have a lot to contribute. I also can bring other ideas outside that other districts are doing. For example, I know other districts receive many grants for things like HVAC and...
Thank you.
... facilities, thank you.
Marissa Gold.
I went to public school my entire career, my entire educational career. And I have coached girls' basketball cheerleading, so I went a little bit, I wouldn't say, I narrate the experience with Mr. Staborzki. But I, you know, I talk to kids... But I, you know, I talk to kids and I talk to teachers. And I think that you don't necessarily have to have the experience of working in a school or running a school to have the open-mindedness to want to get to know what is going on in the schools. And I think that's the most important, is listening, keeping an open mind, and finding out what works and what doesn't.
Thank you, Alison Beers.
I think we've, I kind of mentioned that I did graduate from public school. So I went to Leewood for my entire career. I still only moved about two miles from where I grew up, so I haven't gotten far in that aspect. So I was a product of a public school district. My experience in working with the district is kind of minimal when I was a children and youth officer, case worker, when children, you know, were in the children and youth system. I would have to attend IEP meetings and other various meetings at the schools with the foster parents and with the kids advocating for that. So that's where most of my experience is coming from. But I would also like to bring to the board that I work at my job with the interdisciplinary team. So that's a beautiful thing about a board. And the team that I work with, we all have different ideas that share different knowledge.
Thank you, Tim Brown.
All right, well, to run a school, we don't. Our job as a board is to be supportive. We have to support our teachers, our staff, our administration. And when we see there's a problem, the administration comes to us and needs help, assistance, funds, whatever the case may be. We have to be a group of people that will discuss, come up with ideas, best way to use the money, and the best way to make that available to our teachers. Which it all comes back to the same thing. It's always about the kids, no matter what. You can sit up here and say whatever you want. It's about the kids. When we're handing the logos out next month, or I guess we're in this month or next month for graduation, that's our product. That's what we sell. Now, when those kids walk across the stage and we hand them their logos, that's the accomplishment of the teachers, the staff, and the school board, which is, that's what we have to sell.
Thank you. This will be the final question of the evening. Past cuts to staffing and budget have severely impacted our elementary and high school music programs. Our marching bands in particular have deteriorated drastically. What are your thoughts on the role of music in education? And what actions would you propose the board to take to restore these programs? Scott Stone.
Yeah, so music and arts have very, 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 my heart, as I mentioned earlier. I was involved in high school. You know, it gives students that are old and probably don't really care about academics right now, who play guitar, drums, whatever, likes to act, you know, do paintings. That's a hook to keep them in school. And hopefully that teacher will see that and use that as an avenue to allow that student to finish graduate high school. As far as funding, I mean, you know, again, our tax revenues, tax revenue, there's a certain amount that's got to be spread so thin you can't even see it. However, public and private grants need to be explored. There's organizations out there, you know, I'm a drummer. I have a drum for my wife. Well, we drummed something for Christmas a couple of years ago. Tom Pearl, Zillstedt, D. Devin Drums. These companies have a certain amount of money that they will give to schools to fund the departments, art programs.
Thank you, David McGrath.
So I think that the arts generally, music very specifically, helps people think creatively, laterally. Helps them build connections they wouldn't otherwise connect. That being said, I do think the school, as Scott mentioned, I do think that the school has limited funds and we do have to focus in our core curriculum. And I think we have to be a little more creative about bringing music back into our space. One of the things that, in addition to speaking with some of the music companies, which I think is a fantastic idea, I think we should be speaking with some of our local artists. I know you all know dozens of people who perform in the arts in one way or another. Either theater, music, painting, I don't know, yeah, a small person in Edinburgh. There are resources in our community, people who are knowledgeable in these areas, who I guarantee are passionate about the arts, just like some of the people here are, who will contribute their time, money, and energy to help kids also be passionate about the arts.
Thank you, Tiffany Donner.
Yes, I think that it's very important to have music and arts, all of it is important. It's all ability to teach, you know. It doesn't just have math, reading, writing, being able to think outside the box, being able to express yourself in different ways is sometimes the only way or some of the more young people are able to communicate. And we need to be able to foster that. Being able to think in creative ways, bringing out the community. Some individuals in the community probably have a gem of an idea, and we need to be able to tap into those resources. And so I think that being able to say that, looking at our budget, yes, what can we do? But being able to say, okay, as a community, this is what we all believe to be important. How do we make it happen for our younger people? Because that's what we're here for, and that's what helps them grow.
Thank you, Luigi Di Francesco.
You know, as far as music, yes, I think it didn't happen.
Back when I was in school, which I figured it was not that long ago, really. But a lot of the kids have gotten those opportunities in a way. I don't, you know, I don't have full-time time anymore for music. You don't have full-time, very, and those kind of things, you know, where the budget was cut. The beautiful thing about what everyone else has already said is that everyone kind of has a different idea of how to approach it. And when you get in a room and you start talking about those ideas, if you have good ideas, someone always knows someone else, like Scott said, with, you know, some money or connection that you could get that opportunity for some of those students, or as other people said, explore different avenues.
Thank you, Tim Brown.
Yeah, the music and the arts, I'm always, I've always supported, proud to support them. And the board has, I mean, we've done a bad job of the past. We've let things go. And another problem is we've had some wonderful music teachers here and art teachers. And the problem is they didn't feel the screen. Their fear was always, well, it's the board going to have things. We're always looking at ways to cut. There are other avenues, and there have been some awesome ideas here. The community involvement, Pancreas community has always done a fantastic job, jumping in and helping out. We haven't asked that lately. And I think that's one thing we've gotten away from. We've talked about in the past, the board, community involvement. And we've had, talked to some members of our community. We have some wonderful ideas coming up, and grants are also another part of that. There are things we can do to improve. But basically, as a board member, we have to find ways to make sure we support.
Thank you, Brian Custer.
Music is math. Simple. And if you don't think so, try to do four-four times, switch it to three-quarter time, holding a whole note, sixteenth note, an eighth note. It's math. And the great thing about the arts, and it's just what makes us human. We can appreciate life more because of the arts. Theater, public speaking, and you might need that in a job sometime in the future. You might need that feeling of being brave and overcoming. And art is the aesthetics and visual and the concepts and the creation. So it's very important. I mean, yes, we're having a new lacrosse team, because there's always room for another sports team, but you don't have a teacher for music or art or that. And it's always a crazy idea for you, sorry. Talk to me later, I've got a crazy idea for you.
Thank you. Each candidate will now have ninety seconds for concluding remarks, beginning with David McGrath.
Okay, so I would like to thank the Pancreas and the administration at Centi Town, the principal. If anybody supports that group or putting this forum together, giving us an opportunity to let the public learn something about us. I'd like to thank the fellow candidates who were brave enough to stand and sit on this stage for the meeting and answer our questions, hopefully with our hearts and our minds. So I'd like to thank you all for trying to be that way, and we have to do that for you. I'd like to thank the members of the public who came, who care enough about our school district to sit in those seats for two hours and listen to hopeful politicians, journalize about issues we hope you also care about. I think Mr. Di Francesco encouraged you to come to board meetings, and I would encourage you to do that as well. I would also encourage you to go back and watch some of the recordings, because I think that's illustrative as well, give you a baseline, right? And I think in concluding, you heard a lot of good ideas up here. And I think on some issues, you heard a lot of people say the same things, because we agree on those. And I think you've heard some issues where we didn't agree. And I think that you have to use those to decide for yourselves. Are you going to allow yourselves to be put in a box? Or are you going to allow yourselves to think for yourself?
Thank you, Tiffany Donner.
I'm so, I guess I have a very long-winded person, so this is wrong. So I agree with David. I want to thank everybody that put this on. It was a great opportunity. I remember lots about each person, even though some of the people I thought I knew some things about, I know some more things about, so I thought that was pretty great. And everybody that submitted a question, thank you. I know that some of them are those urgent questions that people want to know, and I think that's important. And that's one of the things that meeting people where they're at is I pride myself on. I want to be able to meet where we're at and understand that I am serving. I would be serving on a school board if I was elected, and I don't expect to be served. I do want to have everybody's opinion, and ultimately, it does go back to the law. It does go back to what's in the best interest for our young people. And I think that's where we need to focus, is bringing back that person's voice all the way from kindergarten up to twelve-three. You know, they're the ones who are learning, they're the ones who are in our schools. They're the ones who know what the climate is. The teachers know what the morale is. We need to be bringing that back to the core client, so that we can make sure that our education is getting put back onto number one. But that starts with our students and their faculty.
Thank you, Luigi Di Francesco.
Well, the, to be a board member is a very high responsibility. And it really requires attention and trying to find out exactly what's going on within the district. I've been spending a lot of time with the superintendent, because I felt that it's my job to make sure that everything goes the way the board already decides. What the administration is supposed to do to make sure that our kids get educated to the point that when they get a graduate, they will be able to find a job they like and the employer is very satisfied with their education. And of course, you know, we hope that if they want to go ahead and get higher education, that'd be fine, that'd be great. But my emphasis is the board responsibility is to make sure that the administration's follow what the board has assigned them to do. When it comes to expenses, you know, the music program is so small compared to all the other expenses. The other expenses, you know, it doesn't even make any sense talking about it. Most of our expenses fall into the wages and benefits. Now, how do we handle that? And this is where the board, the board size has got to get together and come to an agreement that it be acceptable to all.
Thank you, Randy Storzki.
Well, thank you to the students for putting this on. As a civic teacher, the civic engagement I see of you two and all the other Centi Town students that put this on, and the teachers who are empowering me to do so, I appreciate it. I see it, I see the hard work you put into it, so I respect that. I guess when it comes to the school board, I don't want to be doing the bare minimum for our students. Look at what these kids are doing for us. Look at what these students are doing for you. We need credit, we need to give them the best education. They deserve the best education. They deserve a cutting-edge education, cutting-edge schools. Now, that's very difficult with a budget, but with a one-year plan, a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, I believe we can reach that. I believe we can reach a better school. I believe we can, Pancreas can be one of the most robust and most astounding schools that we have in here. Sitting on a board with insight into twenty-first century problems in the building, twenty-first century problems with administrators. I think it's our responsibility to empower the administrators, the teachers, and the students, provide the learning space that they deserve to meet those challenges in the twenty-first century. So again, I thank you all.
Thank you, Marissa Gold.
I just wanted to echo the thanks. I really appreciate these students putting this on. I can't say enough about the teachers and administrators that are behind them, that have encouraged them to engage like this. The school for having this event, I felt my fellow candidates, because I think that coming out here and letting everyone know their individual beliefs has been really important and very eye-opening. I think it's great that everybody could do so. As far as the board, I just, I just want to be part of something great. And I think that we can make that happen when we elect the people that we believe care the most and who have the right things in their hearts for these kids. And so I just also want to thank everybody else for coming out and listening to all the candidates tonight.
Thank you, Alison Beers.
Thanks to you guys for putting this on, giving us the opportunity to get out here and kind of say what we're about and why we're running. I can't remember a school board election or, you know, in my early adult years. So this is kind of different for me, and it's interesting and exciting to see all of this happening, to kind of know who you're going to go for, not walking into the election quietly and just seeing a bunch of names out of the ballot that you haven't heard anything about those people. So I'm glad to have this opportunity. I want to strive to offer the highest quality education for all of our current district's students and the future students, my son and his classmates, all of our friends and neighbors and the whole Pancreas community. Seeing teachers and administrators and other district staff and my family, I admire all the dedication and resourcefulness that goes into that. And I'm a reasonable person, so I want, you know, work with the group to make what's best for our students happen. And like I said, I'm glad that we got the opportunity to tell you a little bit of what we're all about. There's lots of people on this stage that have been part of the work. And, you know, Mr. Luigi had said that he maybe didn't see any of us at the meeting, but we're watching.
Tim Brown.
All right, good evening, and thank you to the Pancreas for hosting. You guys did a fantastic job, and as always, we're proud of you. As usual, school board campaigns can come up with a total misinformation. I've been on this board for six years. The first four were good. We had good leadership, Jason Black is a marketer of their profession. We had an open discussion. We encouraged our ideas. Normal people don't want nine-legged-minded people, because women's our ideas and views. My views and ideas do not line up completely with that of the candidates from both Pancreas. But there's one thing we have in common. It's our kids sharing different ideas and having intelligent conversations, allowing for growth, while having a nine-legged mind allowing for stagnation in the district. CRT is a key topic, and I agree with you. Public school is not a place for that. But we have a whole same place for that, to fight that agenda. We have so many great teachers and staff, and they don't get the credit for their work. We need to celebrate their work and encourage others to follow their lead. My neighbor here, he wants reading accomplished by the end of first grade, and I agree with my neighbor. But until we invest in smaller class sizes in K through two, this would be hard to accomplish in twenty-plus students in a class with one teacher who's slash a parent, slash a nurse, slash caregiver, slash a principal, slash a therapist, and slash my teacher. It's time to have a board that realizes the challenges our teachers face.
Brian Custer. Brian Custer.
Hi, I'm Brian Custer. Um, it's spelled like Hank's frozen. Uh, if you see my signs, they are with the color of the district, I, it's the only one I think, the color of the district on my signs. I'm asking for your vote. I get a little passionate, so sometimes I get a little loud. Thank you to the Panther Press, because you were, you were fair, you were unbiased. Thanks for everybody treating each other with respect, and thank you for your questions and for only snickering and laughing and making comments minimally. I appreciate that, because we're up here. Um, but thank you for, for showing up, and, um, I ask for your, your vote on May sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Stone.
Yeah, so, to, to reiterate, thank you to the, uh, Panther Press, Dr. Howard, attendees, fellow candidates. Um, words matter, actions matter. I would just highly encourage each and every one of you to go back and watch previous board meetings and, and see what's going on. You know, I have an idea, keep it local and don't get involved. That's extremely hard, when, when, when there's been things said tonight, that, that I, I mean, I've got evidence, like, black and white evidence, uh, that can prove otherwise, but it's about the students, it's about a board that will support the teachers, it's about a board that will treat, uh, the, you know, staff at Pancreas, the students at Pancreas, the residents of Pancreas with respect and dignity. And words and actions matter. And we can either be a, uh, a school district that repels students in, into their, their God-given destiny, to do what they want to accomplish, or we can be one that spends time beating dead horses and going around the same mountain, because we won't, uh, snippets and, and answer, and, and, you know, if it bleeds, it bleeds. We've got to do better as a board, we've got to do better as a district. I don't have all the answers, but again, I'm going to roll up my sleeves and listen and let's come to a, a, a agreeable situation.
Thank you.
Again, I would like to extend a lot of gratitude to you guys for coming out and the candidates for running and attempting to make Pancreas a better place. Uh, Election Day is May sixteen, so make sure to vote, and tonight's forum will be available for viewing on the Panther Press's YouTube page, so if you go there, it'll be new days, it should be up. Uh, this concludes tonight's forum, and again, thank you from the Panther Press. At this time, we'd like to have all candidates report to the panel for a brief photo in front of the computer panel. Thank you.